Did you already get Parker?
Not present.
Couple of others.
All right, two-minute warning, councilors, two-minute warning. I'm calling the August 13th, 2020 regular meeting of the Roswell City Council to order. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Here.
Counselor O'Kesak?
Here.
Counselor Moore?
Counselor Moore, here.
Counselor Robach?
Here.
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Kennard?
Here.
Counselor Best?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez? Counselor Foster?
Here.
Counselor Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Kentai?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please rise while Counselor Kennard leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Counsel Robach does the invocation. Counselor Kennard, you have the floor.
Father God, we thank you for your blessings, thank you for your goodness, we ask you a peace, let's be in our communities, be in our homes, be in our business, we ask you a peace tonight, be a great thing.
All right. We, just so everyone understands, Counselor Moore is participating tonight by go-to meeting, and we have no one signed up on go-to meeting to speak on any of the agenda items. That's correct, okay, let the record reflect that. We do have some individuals wishing to speak on other items later in the agenda. I will remind everyone to please silence your cellphone, myself included. And without further ado, where is Mr. Matthews? There he is.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's my high honor tonight to bring this next item to the council, the first item of the night. As you're all aware, our fire chief is retiring at the end of this month, so tonight we're going to honor him and his family for his over 20 years of service to this community. Just a couple of fun facts, Chief Graham is the 18th fire chief in the history of the Roswell Fire Department. He started his career with the Roswell Fire Department in 1999, and he'll finish that at the end of this month. His wife, Priscilla, and their sweet baby girl, Nisi, is here with him tonight, along with his dad and his in-laws, so most of his family is here, so we appreciate them being here. I've had the pleasure of working with Devin for well over 20 years, not just professionally, but personally, we served together in our church, considering him one of my dearest friends, and I'm super excited for him tonight. So Mayor, I know you have a presentation, so I won't take up all the time. I know Devin well enough, he probably has about a 15-minute speech to give at the end, so I'll be sure and give him time to do that. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm not really good at this kind of stuff, believe it or not. Only word that comes close is "thanks." And I say that not just for this community and this council, but for me personally. It's not much, it's all I really got to offer you. But we also have a plaque, so come on down.
Picture time.
Okay. And on three, okay, one, two, and three, would you like to invite your family up here? You all can stay. Oh, absolutely. Okay, Counselor Robach and Perry, and Counselor this way. On three, one, two. Is it Nisi? Nisi! Hi, sweet girl, there we go. And then how about your?
I'm going to ask for one more.
Your fire?
What's the line? They don't count.
The fire?
You guys, Mike, you guys in the front row.
I have to scoot in just a tiny bit. Hold on, I'm just waiting for her to... No, go ahead. No, just keep coming. Keep coming, Counselor.
I'm so sorry!
You're okay.
Why did I stand in open?
On three, one, two. Okay, stay right there, don't come back up.
There you go!
I got it.
Fifteen minutes? Fifteen minutes is what I've got. Okay, thank you. All right, sorry about that, but Chief Graham, you want to go ahead?
Yes, sir. Just quickly, thank you, I appreciate the recognition, I appreciate the well wishes and the positive speak. You know, it is 21 years today, to the date, August 13th, 1999, I was 19-years-old, been there 21 years. These guys back here get tired of hearing me say this, but I've been there, been at the RFP even more years in my life than I haven't, and so when I step away, it's kind of a new chapter, obviously a chapter I'm looking forward to, but closing a chapter that I've certainly enjoyed and am very proud of, the opportunity to work with some incredible people, do some incredible things, have some highs and some lows. You know, a big thank you to all the administrations from the past, both the city, the city council, and also the fire department administrations, the previous chiefs that laid the groundwork for the fire department. You have an incredible fire department down there. I don't believe that I made the fire department better, I believe I'm better because of the fire department and the career that I've had there, and so I am stepping away and leaving it in good hands. This is just a small sample of the guys that are down there to carry on and to carry on the mission, and they fully understand it, and they will do it with a level of excellence, I'm confident. I would like to mention, he's not here tonight, but also retiring as my deputy chief, Jason Swetfield, he's retiring the same day that I am, and so not an ideal circumstance for both of us to be leaving at the same time, but I do believe that the department will be in good hands when we leave and continue on. You know, not enough thank yous, I know I'm not winning an Emmy here, but you know, obviously couldn't have done this without the support of my family. I still lived at home when I hired, and so my mom and dad supported me early in my career and throughout, my in-laws that have been a big part of my life, but obviously, most importantly, my beautiful wife of over 17 years. She's been, you know, I was on the fire department when we got married, and so she hasn't known anything different. She's had an amount of the Roswell Fire Department, I guarantee you that, as hard as we try to not take in this line of work, to not take home with us, it's impossible. And so I won't say she's had her fill, I won't speak for her, but she's had some Roswell Fire Department in her life, and so, but she, when I first got promoted nearly six years ago, been the chief almost six years, including my interim time, one of the guys said, well, she's our new first lady of the fire department, and she handled being the first lady with grace and dignity, and I could not have gotten through my career without her, so. And our baby girl that came along just a couple of years ago, that turned our life upside down, I'm looking forward to spending time with them and making the two of them more of a priority in my life, so. I've been blessed, God has blessed me, and I look forward to see what he's got for my next chapter, so thank you guys very much.
It's been pointed out to me that I've overlooked one of my most important responsibilities tonight. Counselor Stubbs?
Well, I didn't know if it was your responsibility or mine. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda for the August 13th, 2020 regular city council meeting to include the minutes from the regular city council meeting on July 9th, 2020, and the special city council meeting on July 23rd, 2020, and the consent agenda consisting of one ITB, one RFP, the fiscal year 21 transit rates, one Roswell air center lease, and two resolutions.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster. Counselor Perry?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, the queue thing may not have shown up at the time. If I can ask Counselor Stubbs to consider this, just as a friendly amendment in it, and maybe the second as well, if we can amend that page 32, which is the abstract for ordinance 20-08, the abstract is missing a portion here, so I would like for the action request to say, to hold a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-08, and then add the following, home occupation, revising Articles 4, 12, 46, 52, and 62, some of those are missing, so if we can add the verbiage, "hold a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-08," and add those articles that I just mentioned.
Okay, I have a motion to amend by Counselor Perry. Do I have a second for the motion? I have a second by Counselor Best. Yes, they are. Hang on. All right, any discussion on the proposed amendment? Ms. Call, do you feel comfortable you know what the proposed amendment is? Mr. Parker Patterson, do you understand? Okay. All right, any questions or comments on the proposed amendment? I'll ask for a voice vote, and to activate your voting machine or voting box, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Counselor Moore, could we hear your vote, please? Thank you.
The amendment passes unanimously. We are now have before us an amended agenda. Any further discussion or debate on the agenda as amended? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll again ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the agenda as amended, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor of the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, Counsel Robach did not activate his machine, so we have a 10 to 0 unanimous vote. All right, thank you, Counsel Stubbs. Moving on to item four. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the recommendation of both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the appropriate staff, I move to uphold the denial of Planning and Zoning Case 20-013 VAR and deny the appeal on the property located at 1503 South Lee, based upon the findings of fact, finding of facts as conclusion of law, staff recommendation, and action taken by the P&amp;Z Commission.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Perry to deny after a appeal hearing the appeal for a planning and zoning case 20-013 variants. Mr. Patterson, will you walk us through this?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Before we get into the substance, I just want to review, and I know you guys have all heard this 100 times, but in this type of hearing, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, that means you'll be taking evidence from witnesses and evaluating that to make a factual determination, which means that you can only consider the evidence that's presented in this room. This is a closed universe, do not consider anything you may have heard outside of here. It also means that you need to take an unbiased and emotion-free, objective determination without personal feelings, setting aside any personal relationships you may have with any parties or with staff or anything, and just resolve it on the basis of the evidence presented and the law that is applicable. After you make that decision, this will be appealable to district court. And that, just so you know, this will be presented by Mr. Morris, and I will be taking a neutral position here, just to be a procedural advisor, and this is a vote that will pass, this is out of nine, because Counselor Moore is not physically present and cannot observe the evidence or exhibits, and therefore she's not present for purposes of this hearing, so it will be a vote out of nine.
And you were explaining earlier about because of the nature of the planning and zoning vote, this will require how many for a resolution?
Five. So the way that the zoning code works is that the number of votes that it takes to approve or deny the motion depends on how it was resolved at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the way that it works is that planning zoning will either have to approve or deny on a basis of a simple majority or two-thirds, depending on how many protests they receive to the proposed action. And so if they receive a certain percentage of protest, then they have to resolve it by a two-thirds majority. And if that is the case, then it becomes, once it comes to this body on an appeal, then it has to be out of all of the governing body. But in this case, not enough protests were received at the planning and zoning level, and so that level, all that was required to pass the amendment, or excuse me, pass the motion, was a simple majority. And so coming to here, now, all that's required is that there be a majority of the members of the governing body present and voting, as opposed to the entire governing body, whether present or not. So that means that for this hearing, a vote of five passes the motion.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will ask all individuals who will be testifying, Mr. Edder, anyone I have brought with you, and any staff that are testifying in this matter, if you'll come forward. Come forward, in front of me. Miss, you will be sworn in by the city clerk, and so we just have these two individuals speaking tonight. All right, Ms. Call, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty or perjury? Thank you.
All right, so we'll start with Mr. Morris.
Good evening, as stated earlier, this is P&amp;Z Case 20-013 VAR.
As stated earlier, this is P&amp;Z Case twenty dash zero-one-three-VAR, Appeal of Commission Denial. Uh, the, uh, Eders are requesting a variance from the front setback for a property located at fifteen oh-three South Lee. Fifteen oh-three South Lee Avenue is zoned R1, single-family one, and has a front setback requirement of twenty-five feet as minimum. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the existing nineteen feet to, down to fifteen feet from the front setback in order to expand the garage by four additional feet. So, we're going from nineteen to fifteen. The property is located southeast of Chisholm and Lee. And what you have here is an aerial that shows the, uh, the front of the garage. The dashed line on the outside is from the back of sidewalk, uh, which is the front, the property line to the garage, has a distance of nineteen feet. Uh, the fifteen feet allocation is shown as, uh, as the second line inside that would represent a forty percent reduction in the front setback. A building permit was issued to the Eders to extend the garage to within fifteen feet in twenty thirteen, uh, from the front setback, but the Eders only extended the garage to nineteen feet, uh, which is where it's at right now. Staff determined that the requested variance did not meet the standards for variance and recommended denial. Within the zoning code, this is the standard for review for a variance. Planning and zoning commissions shall decide whether or not to approve a variance request based on all oral and written statements of the applicant, the public, city staff, and its own members. Planning and zoning commissions also consider the effect of the proposed variance upon neighborhood traffic, public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Planning and zoning commission shall not approve a variance unless satisfied that a request will alleviate some unusual hardship, is consistent with the general intent of the ordinance, that it conforms to the conference master plan, the, uh, it's our city's land use plan, and that is in this public interest and not solely in the interest of the applicant. Uh, after a discussion at planning and zoning, uh, a recommendation for denial was, uh, was placed by a vote of three-two, and staff is still recommending denial of this case and will ask, it will stand for any questions.
All right. At this point, we'll turn to Mr. Eder. Go ahead and come on up, sir, and you can make your presentation. We'll go with questions after Mr. Eder, then we'll give both presenters, Mr. Morris and Mr. Eder, an opportunity to rebut. So, Mr. Eder, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, counselors, um, the reason I'm here is, like you said, the, when we had the variance committee, they went three to two, but also in that, they were also told that I was asked, going for a second variance, so they mostly focused on that versus, you know, where we were talking about. I did buy a bigger vehicle, which is true. I'm just trying to get it in the garage to protect that, plus protect my family, and try to get, you know, within the rights, you know, with the law, where I don't have it actually hanging part of the sidewalk. And I took my hitch off because it actually stuck out even further as a safety issue. I'm just trying to make it safe for everybody and plus my family. And plus, I'm doing some roof work, so I was just trying to get all that done all at one time. And that's the only reason I came here, to try to get this overturned, so I can go ahead and get done what I need to get done on my house. And I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, questions or comments on this matter? All right. Counsel, go ahead and activate your request to speak. All right. I have Counselor, oh, Counselor Perry beat you to it.
Sorry, okay.
Counselor Perry and then Counselor Robach. Counselor Perry.
Just a few quick questions. Uh, number one, it says, uh, on the abstract that there was the three, the three to two vote. How did those votes, uh, lay? Do you remember who voted in favor versus against?
I do not. I think that their story, Commissioner Story was, uh, recommend denial or overturning the denial, and also our new Commissioner, Mr. Lopez. Uh, the other three, um, were, were in, in approval for the denial.
Another question that I have with, uh, can you please go back to the slide with your, with your Google Earth or whatever? Um, with, uh, i- if it became the fifteen foot, uh, there, how much distance is left within that between the sidewalk and where the new garage portion would be? What is that linear?
It, it would be fifteen feet.
That would be fifteen feet?
Correct.
And inside of that fifteen feet, uh, are there any requirements? I don't believe they are, but I would like to know. Are there any ADHD requirements on residential?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Doing, I guess my concern is what could fit inside of that without touching the garage or, or the, um...
Or the sidewalk.
Or the sidewalk. Uh, and I'm, I'm not an expert on cars, so I wouldn't know, but are there much that could?
There's some. I mean, smaller sedans or the smart cars, some Hyundai's could, but not most trucks.
Okay.
Or larger vehicles. It's, it's, it's pretty tight. Pretty tight.
Okay. And in the block or in the surrounding properties, is there anything closer to the road than what he currently has?
Uh, you can see in this picture, the only other one that we're aware of is the one on the north side, just to the north of him, where the garage does extend down to basically the front of his garage at the moment.
And is that a garage or carport there?
Well, it's more, I think it's a carport.
Okay. But, uh, nothing else in that general area is extending any closer to?
It seems that the, the, the general character of the area is twenty-five foot.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, the general character of the area. Thank you, Aye.
All right. Thank you. I have Counselor Robach, Counselor Foster, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Robach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I ask, uh, Mr. Eder, how long have you been at the residence?
Sir?
Come on up and speak into a microphone so we can get a decent recording.
I've been there twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years? Um, are you planning on leaving anytime soon? That you know?
Nope. I don't plan on leaving at all.
And you're, and, uh, just so I understand correctly, your plan is to park the vehicle inside the garage?
Yes, sir. I've been, I'm parking it inside.
Okay. Um, the, uh, the, in, in two thousand thirteen, you did an expansion, you turned it from a carport to a garage? Is it my understanding of that correctly?
Right. Well, I actually started out, I had the building permit to do the carport, and we changed that and, and closed the garage.
Sure. Okay.
Yes, we had all the building permits to do that.
Okay. And, and, and in that two thousand thirteen, I believe I saw in the packet, uh, at that point, you had been given permission to go out the extra four feet. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
But I didn't go out that far because at the time, I didn't have the bigger vehicle.
Sure. Sure. Um, and then just a question, not necessarily for you, but, and, and, uh, did I read correctly that there was no objections given by any, any of neighbors or residents?
No.
To this, to this, uh, to this addition? So, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have Counselor Foster and then Counselor Peterson. That exhausts my list. Counselor Foster.
Uh, basically, that answered my question, 'cause that's what, originally, the, the variance that was granted was to go to the fifteen foot, and then it just wasn't built.
Actually, there was no previous variance.
But the, but there was a building permit before that was?
Building permit was issued, yes.
Issued and granted to, to bill to that? Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Peterson, you have the floor. That exhausts my list.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I guess, um, the, the question would be to, I have driven down, down this, uh, street and looked at that, uh, residence. The, it wouldn't be that much difference to add, you know, to add the four feet on there, you know? I don't see why we couldn't. None of the neighbor, none of the neighbors are, are protesting, are they? Mr. Morris?
No.
Okay. And if you go down Lee Street, on that section of Lee Street is the, it's really wide right there on the, you know, where the city owns that area. And I don't, it's gonna be blending in with, with the other, uh, with the other neighbor's carport. So, I, I don't think it would make that much difference. And that, that street is pretty busy. And I think if he could get his vehicle on, uh, inside the garage, it'd be good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor, sir. That exhausts my list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for, for a matter of clarification, this property is not a corner property, right?
No, it is not a corner property, no.
And, and he did get permission for fifteen foot previously?
With a, with the building permit, yes, in twenty thirteen.
And I also noticed in the packet that there is a letter of, uh, recommendation, if you will, or no objection from one of the neighbors. Was this the only letter that, that was received either in favor of or against?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Perry. Counselor, you have the floor.
Uh, may, may I ask our attorney a question? Is that possible?
You may.
Okay. Just a quick question. Do we set any kind of precedence by, by, in this particular area? I know in former years when we, uh, did stuff in variance, uh, we were always advised that this could indeed entail that neighbors, uh, within that area could possibly pull theirs up as well. So, I'd like your, uh, interpretation as well.
Does not create a legal precedent, and that's the whole concept of a variance, is that it varies from everything else. I would say that it creates a practical precedent, uh, you know, in the future, people are gonna say, you let this person do it, why can't I do it? And when people see that it's so far out, they may assume that they can build that far out without having to actually go and get a variance, just by observing what else is in the neighborhood. But legally speaking, it does not create a binding precedent in the future.
Thank you.
All right. That exhausts my list. Any other questions or comments on this matter? I have Counselor Robach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and just for, for clarification, I know you, you mentioned this earlier, one of you did, but how far is that truck parked, is sticking out right now into the sidewalk?
It's pretty close to the property line.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the aerial is showing here.
Sure. Sure. Uh, can that, can that truck, in the current status, fit all the way into the parking space without, without, without leaking out into the sidewalk? Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures here in the, uh...
Do you get it in the packet there?
Yeah, from the pack, from the, uh...
Yes, it's out anywhere from six inches to a foot.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
That exhausts my list. At this time, uh, Mr. Morris, did you want to add anything else to your presentation?
Uh, no, sir.
All right.
Fine.
Mr. Eder, do you wish to add anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, both you gentlemen. Counselors, I have no one else wishing to speak. Neither Mr. Eder nor Mr. Morris wishes to add to it. I will now ask for a roll call vote. The motion was to deny the appeal. A yes vote approves the denial. A no vote rejects the denial and approves the variance. Do I have that straight, Mr. Patterson? All right. This little frightening that you had to take a second to think about that. I will repeat this. A yes approves the denial or supports the denial. A no rejects the denial and approves the variance. It's a little backwards. A no vote approves the variance because the motion was made to deny the appeal. Any questions on what I'm asking on the vote? A no vote essentially approves the variance. A yes vote denies it. Okay. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Robach?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yeah. No.
Could you repeat that, please, Counselor Sanchez?
You can also activate your vote box.
Oh, he did.
I can't, I can't see it. It's a yes. Counselor Foster?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
The vote is five to four. Yes vote.
The denial is upheld. Next is item number five. Counselor Perry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, um, with, uh, give me just one more, make sure I'm on the correct.
Item five.
Yes, sir. Uh, with the, uh, recommendation of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance twenty dash zero-five, amending chapter twenty-three of the city, uh, Roswell City Code relating to lodgers tax.
I have a motion by Counselor Perry. Please activate the motion box, Counselor. And a second by, anyone? No, one more time. Oh, one more time. I have, whoa, stop. I have Counselor Peterson doing the second. All right. Ms. Jennings?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, tonight, I'm here to, uh, present this proposed ordinance for this public hearing for the lodgers tax update, which amends chapter twenty-three, article one of the Roswell City Code. Um, this ordinance is, um, the changes that are being proposed is due in part to the recent amendment to the lodgers tax act through the state, um, legislature, which was SB one-oh-six and HB one-seventeen. A little bit of history on those two. Um, the background for SB one-oh-six is the new law went into effect as of January of this year, which requires any short-term rentals to now collect gross receipts state tax, as well as, um, allowing municipalities to collect lodgers tax. And this, um, when I say short-term rentals, this is transient-type, uh, facility homes. Um, this is not apartment complexes or anything like that. The background on HB one-seventeen, um, that restricts the exemptions of lodgers tax greater than thirty days if it's for temporary lodging. So, um, currently, right now, in our hotels, if somebody is staying from one to thirty days, after the thirtieth day, they are no longer required to pay the five percent lodgers tax. This HB one-seventeen now allows us to start collecting lodgers tax at day thirty-one. Um, because of that, it adds a new, uh, section that allows the municipality to outline how those funds are utilized, and, um, you will see those four, or three items that have been allocated. Again, the definition of a short-term rental are those that are used for transient accommodations. Um, currently in Roswell, um, we had sixty-four of these short-term rental properties that are operating without a business license, um, and had not been, um, in compliance if these laws, uh, or actually, excuse me, when these laws went into effect. So, by updating the ordinance, we would now be able to, um, speak with these sixty-four properties and get them in compliance with our city code. Um, these are just a few of the, um, properties, uh, listing sites that they can go to to rent their, uh, rooms or rent their home. Uh, the two most popular are Airbnb and VRBO. The current status or the process, how we got here tonight, um, this originally went to the legal committee back in April, um, and then it was heard at the city council meeting in June. We did take it back because we were informed that HB one-seventeen would go into effect in July, so we wanted to include that language into the proposed ordinance so that we wouldn't have to re-update again. It was then taken to the... It was then taken to the Legal Committee on June 25th. However, we weren't allowed to take action because we lost quorum. So that is why it went to the Finance Committee on July 2nd. Tonight, this is again just the revision that allows these two updates to be made to our current municipality code. I do have our city attorney, Mr. Parker here, as well as Stephanie Mervine, who has been managing our STAR report and will manage the process should this pass this evening. Additionally, we've met with our code enforcement office and do have a process in place, ready to go, to allow these property owners to be in compliance. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Counselors. Any questions? Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a matter of clarification, because I haven't read the statute, so I don't know. Is there some kind of penalty if they don't pay the lodger's tax or the bed fees or whatever?
Yes. So currently, our process right now, they have until the 25th of the month. One thing I did forget to mention, and I do apologize, this levels the playing fields for hotels, as well as the RV parks and the Airbnb or short-term rental property owners. If they do not pay by the 25th of the month, we did not have a grace period. One thing that I would like to recommend to our city manager is to provide them a letter. This was a process that was currently being handled in our Finance Department, and we have just recently transitioned it to our department. The process would be is we would send them a letter letting them know that they have not been compliant and did not meet the deadline, and they would have 10 business days to come up to current financial revenues, to submit their revenues to us. At that point, then I would probably involve Mr. Patterson. And for the state gross receipts tax, that is something that they would have to work with the state of New Mexico.
But as far as, as far as we're concerned, if they absolutely refuse, you send them the letter, you make contact, they say absolutely not, we don't want to do it. What happens?
I would think we would follow the process for any business that is operating within the city of Roswell, but I would defer to Mr. Parker on what would happen. Because it is a business that they're operating within our city.
Yeah, we do have penalties built into the ordinance, and those come out of state statute. And so what the process would be, would, if somebody flat refuses, we would send them a notice that goes out that says, you know, you are, this does apply to you, we are aware of your operations, you need to pay the lodger's tax, and if you don't, these are the penalties that are available to us. And then if they continue to refuse, we have the option to assess those penalties. And the lodger's tax ordinance does provide for various enforcement remedies, including, I believe, filing of a lien.
And the reason I ask, because I know for a fact that we had one hotel, a major hotel, that went, I don't know, three, four, or five months, or whatever number of months they went without paying lodger's tax. And it seemed like they never got any penalty whatsoever.
I do believe I know which one you are referring to. And again, I would hope that this council would believe in our department that we would follow the processes in place to provide them the notice and to follow up and have good follow-through with those hotel property owners moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no one else on my list wishing to speak on this matter. Counselor Perry?
Just being a public hearing?
Yes, I'm just checking.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, as Counselor Perry has properly pointed out, this is a public hearing. As such, if there's anyone in any of the overflow rooms who wishes to speak on this matter, they should come forward at this time to this, to the chambers. Furthermore, I think we have two individuals online, go-to meeting, is that correct? One. Yeah, if that person wishes to speak on this, they have an option to do so. Once again, if there's anyone in the other rooms who wishes to speak on this matter, is there anyone present in this room wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of this proposed ordinance? I see no one in this room wishing to speak. You have someone wishing to speak on this. All right. Can we get them on a microphone and unmuted?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I'll need you to state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Michael Pitts, and I live down in Artesia, but I own rental property in Roswell at a number of locations. And my main concern with the ordinance deals with the definition of temporary lodger. While I feel like the council's intent is, is good, just the definition of temporary lodging, to me, seems very vague. Because when, as I read the proposed ordinance, it says anybody who resides near their work. Well, that could be any of my long-term tenants. I don't do short-term tenants. But, you know, if I've got somebody that moves in for, you know, signs of lease that moves in and they're, and they're three blocks from their house, from their work, rather, because they're living in one of my rentals that's close to their residence, that residence is close to their work, that could really be interpreted very loosely. And I think that language for temporary lodging needs to be tightened up to indicate what I think the council's true purpose is here. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you, sir. Is, let me see if there's anyone else. Do we have anyone coming in from, Mr. Fuentes, can you stick your head out, see if there's anybody coming from the other rooms? You don't have to go very far, just see if there's anyone moving this way. Nope. All right, let the record reflect, there is no one present in the building who wished to speak on this matter. Ms. Jennings?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Patterson for the answer. I'm going to let him speak.
Just to clarify, the definition of temporary lodging, which is in the proposed ordinance, is not one that we developed. It's actually in the state law that we were discussing earlier. It's not our definition, it's the one provided to us by the legislature.
Okay. I thought that might be the case. All right, and Counselor Robach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick clarification, as I understand this, temporary lodging is talking about things that function in the same manner as a hotel, where people are booking a room for a night or some series of nights. It's not, it's not applying to permanent housing or even semi-permanent housing where people are moving here and establishing a residence of some sort here.
It would apply in the instance that if somebody is moving here and renting a property for their job. In the HB 117, that was part of the change, where if they're moving here for work and they're staying longer than 30 days, it would apply. It would not be for, I don't know, what would be an example?
Just to, if you look right above the temporary lodging in your packet, a taxable premises is a hotel, a motel, or other premises used for lodging that is not the vendor's household or primary residence. So those are the types of locations that are taxable under the lodger's tax ordinance. And so if you are a hotel, motel, or other premises used for lodging that is not the vendor's house or primary residence, and the vendor is there for the, to be in proximity of a job or employment location, then this applies to that person if they stay more than 30 days.
Okay, and so then my question, because that's obviously going to be impossible to really, what's a primary, then you get into the definition of primary residence, I don't want to get into that discussion right now, because that's a very interesting one that has a lot of political implications. As far as how the city is planning on enforcing or finding these places or whatever, are you going to be looking to the services you listed? Are you going, how, how are you going to be seeking out or not seeking out these residences that may or may not apply to me on this somewhat gray area, depending on what the definition of permanent residence is?
Part of that, I will say, I mean, this is a, this is a lacuna gap that maybe is built into the legislation that we've received. What I've tried to do, at least with regard to the question of what is temporary lodging, is basically throw that back on to the vendor, the tax, the tax entity. If you look, we have in the next page, Section 3, Reporting and Collection, under subsection D, we've added that part of their reporting is to include the amount of tax deriving from the 31st and subsequent day of vendor rents lodging and taxable premises. The idea being there, when they submit their report to us, they're going to set aside a line item that says this is our temporary lodging. And it's important that they do that because the purposes for which we may use funds derived for temporary lodging is different from the purposes for which we may use funds for, that we collect for other vendors. And so that's part of it. And then, you know, with regard to finding these people, I think that Public Affairs has got a whole plan in place. I'll let her talk about that.
We do. So we would follow some of our other communities that are utilizing similar services. When a property is being listed, we would get a report that shows us that's how we were able to identify the 64, 64 current operators within Roswell right now. And it grows, it goes down, and so we would utilize that system and software.
Who does that report come, of the STAR report?
It's part of the STAR report, but it's, it's an outside vendor company that would ensure compliance.
Okay. So that outside vendor is then telling us who is a, one of these, that's how we're, that's how you are defining it?
Yes.
For this thing? So if someone's not covered by that or followed by that outside vendor that you're talking about, they're not reporting to that outside vendor, then, then we, we just won't know about if they exist or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Perry. Counselor, you have the floor.
I'm sorry for being the one up here who needs further clarification. So if we have someone who takes a job at, at one of our local hospitals where we have shortage of nurses, and this gentleman on the phone has a rental property here, and they, they, they sign a six-month lease, or they, they decide they're going to come and they're going to raise their family here in Roswell, and they're looking for a house to buy, while they are renting this house, are they having to give this tax the entire time they're renting this house?
That is correct. It is very similar to our long-term stays hotels. So again, it levels the playing field for our properties like the Candlewood Suites, the Marriott.
I guess my question would be though, and I apologize that I interrupted, I'm sorry. If this is their primary residence, they've moved their, their family from Nebraska to here, and they don't have a home in Nebraska. They may have only signed a three-month contract while they're looking to purchase a long-term house or something, but it is their primary residence, does that not get sticky?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes, yes, sir, it does.
That's where I'm squirming on this, because I think I recognize that we do have a great need for a lot of things in Roswell. I sure don't want to be part of the hindrance of people moving to Roswell. So that, and I appreciate the phone call, you know, some things you're reading, you just don't see. So I just need, I'd like to sort of some clarification on that. So, so if, if they consider it their primary residence, that's where they are getting mail, this is where their, you know, stuff is coming to. I mean, I know I've, I've lived in a home while I'm waiting to buy a new home. If it's their primary residence, would that not negate this, this tax?
Yes, and part of the, or potentially, I'll say, and part of the problem is that this definition of taxable premises is also brand-new and coming from the legislature in these new...
So it's going to take time to learn what they think it is.
Right, so we don't even, there's no cases on what this is, there's nothing, this is a brand-new definition, all of this stuff is new. And how it will work in the real world is not been determined yet. We are kind of on the cutting edge.
And I will say that I know that this HB 117 was specifically targeted for southeast New Mexico because of our oil and gas industry in other meetings and conversations, because we do lose out on so much opportunity for the lodger's tax revenue. So, if that.
Well, I think with the, and I appreciate you bringing up the definition of taxable premises above, I think that that gives me a little bit of peace about the possibility that someone who wants to make Roswell home, and they're in a temporary situation, but it is their, their primary residence that, that, that there's, there's, there's ability there for leniency. I yield.
All right, I have Counselor Foster. Now that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
And I'm on legal, and we went through this, and I thought we had got, captured everything. But then, just looking at this scenario, and it's something I'm for us going ahead and passing it as is, but I think we might want to look at, maybe an amendment or look into. If someone comes here to go to school at Eastern and they rent an apartment, that's not their primary residence. Their primary residence is still wherever they came from, and so now, so that's where I'm saying it's something that we may need to look into to clarify that loophole.
Could I just say that I don't think coming to school would be a job or employment location?
Well, moving here for a temporary, well, a school, I tell my kids, and when I, all my kids, that when I was teaching high school, they teach school, you treat it as a job. And so, I mean, and that's where I'm saying it gets to that fuzzy point where...
May I add something? I also don't think that would be something that would be coming in on our list of potential operators either.
Well, and that's where I, the gentleman that spoke from Artesia, I do believe his stuff won't come on in our potential either. And so, but I do think that when you're passing ordinance, you need to find every one, because we don't want to, 10 years down the road. And so, but I, like I said, I'm for it as it stands, I just want to make sure that we have, and like you said, this is something that's new from the legislature. There's going to be things that they're going to need to tighten up on. And so I just wanted to bring out the one scenario, so thanks.
Thank you.
That exhausts my list. Just for the record, Counselor Moore is participating once again and will be participating in this vote. Any other discussion or comments on this matter? I'll ask for a roll call vote. A yes or aye approves proposed ordinance 20-05, a no or nay rejects it. Missed call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kinnard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Passes 10 to 0. Next item up is item number six. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. This is at the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Legal Committee that I move to hold a public hearing and approve ordinance number 20-08. The city of, the city of Roswell revising Articles 4, 12, 46, 52, and 62 to the zoning code and providing for severability and effective date.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve proposed, to have a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-08. Mr. Morris?
Thank you. This ordinance is a little bit eclectic. I mean, it's a mixture of different things. It started out dealing with home occupations and some of the issues that we're dealing with, but as we went through the next six months, beginning in last July, through this process, through planning and zoning, we came across the typical weird anomalies that staff wanted to add, so that's why this thing kind of grew as it did. And I'm starting on page 45 of the, of the packet. The first items in here are, and the first batch of things are all really related to looking at residential development and trying to see if we can create additional flexibility for uses on residential lots. A lot of these lots we've talked about are not as big as they may want to be, and there's people looking to put new things in there. So just at the beginning, we had some, we added a definition on the front line, the front lot line, it's typically the, the small side of a parcel, the long side is the side yards. The long side is the side yards, but we do have homes where they've actually turned them sideways on corners. So, the front door's on the side, and it messes up setbacks, so we just put that in there to kind of give us some more flexibility with that. The bottom one is a kind of a leftover. We have in the older areas, for some reason, lots where the house is existing at the back end of the parcel, not up the street. And so, you see the house way back there, and we thought, well, why not, in certain situations, can't we look at this as an opportunity for somebody to come back through, maybe put in another lot or another unit on that same lot? Better utilize that area and add some additional housing. So, that was what this was all about. Going on to page 47, we, last summer, I think most of you all know that we had a spat of RV park applications. We had like six of them. Not all of them really got processed, but during that time, we identified some issues with what we had, and so, we've made some changes basically, especially to like pull-through lots, and you'll see it there. It just makes things better and easier for the actual developers to do this in the future, be able to lay these things out. Now, on page 49 is building performance standards. Let's see, which is Article 52, and it dealt with accessory structures. Now, these are accessory structures, and some in the residential and also in the commercial. Primarily, what we did with the residential was to try to give it a little bit more flexibility with these. And in the commercial, we actually found out we don't have any standards for accessory structures. These are things in the commercial districts. So, we thought, well, we should have some because people are always trying to put one on, put these back in. So, on page 49, there's a, coming down to A to C is the first one, and you do have a, working with Counselor Perry, you do have a handout, which is the modification for these accessory structures, and we tried, we were going to try to do a minimum of 15 and reduce it down to 10 on the site visibility triangle, but we also add, wanted to add a maximum, so there's a variability in there. So, there's always something that a property owner has with respect to that dimension, and that's to ensure clear site visibility. Going on to page 50 and 51 is all the new requirements that will go in for accessory structures in commercial properties. These are basically mimicking the ones that are in residential, but like I said, we don't, didn't have anything. So, we had no way to basically regulate any of this stuff. And finally, we thought it was an important one. It's in the middle of page 51. It's number 5, exceptions to required side yards or required yards, and it's number E. And this one is where a property line can be established in a neighborhood. We have areas where homes don't meet all the setbacks, they don't, because over time, either the road's been expanded or something's happened. So, the prevailing character is not what it typically would be today. And so, if there's a vacant lot, what we don't want to do is apply modern standards necessarily to a new house in an area that's old because it looks like it's out of place. So, this would let us do that, basically establish a, like a character, neighborhood character setback lane. And if that's okay, then we'll start into the belly of the beast. Home occupations. First off, this started out trying to address a situation that we get a lot of comments and complaints about, and that is with work vehicles and a lot of heavier work vehicles at, in residential areas. We're only concerned with home occupation on these standards. And actually, home occupations are really a commercial use in a residential district. That's what they are. They're a commercial use in a residential district. We have two kinds. We have minors and majors, little ones and big ones, that's what we call them, but they're basically about how much impact do they potentially generate? Some of the minors don't have to go to planning and zoning. Major home occupations do go to planning and zoning for consideration. Now, the philosophy behind home occupations is that, one, they're either innocuous, that they're uses that are located within a house, you don't know that they're happening, you don't see signage, you don't see deliveries, and most communities have a very finite number of uses that they'll permit. Things like an attorney office, accountants, dressmakers, CPAs, things like this. Internet is now a big one, where internet business can be set up in a house, they're transferring, taking orders, placing orders elsewhere. No materials actually pass through the house. It's just an office. And so, that is a typical home occupation. And so, what we're trying to do, that's the innocuous type. The second kind of use that we have here is really as an incubator. These rules allow for certain kinds of businesses, and hopefully, they do. They actually can be used to grow. The idea is that the business can grow within the residential areas up to a certain point. At that point, the decision has to be made because the impacts to that, those adjacent communities from that business can be pretty severe and significant. So, the idea is you have a business, you can grow it, and then, at some point, if you are a certain type of business, and then, this is particularly true for the trades, that there comes a time where you have enough stuff, you've got enough business, you need to move out. Problem is that they're not. They're staying put. And so, we have heavy machinery that's being put in people's backyards, backhoes, front-end loaders, dump trucks, that are all there, and, or being placed in the right-of-way and taking up parking spaces that people, that in that neighborhood need to do, needed for their own parking. So, first major changes coming through, actually significantly are on page 53. That's very, under H. No oversized vehicles or construction equipment can be stored or used on the property or in the easements, alleys, or right-of-ways adjacent to or near the home. And that is, that's really important for us because we have several situations right now, as I just said, where there is heavy equipment in people's backyards surrounding other people's houses that they've bought, their investments. And so, that's having an impact. The sheet that you see, and it was pointed out, we probably need a good definition for construction and heavy equipment, and so, I would like to make a motion to include this particular one, the construction heavy equipment definition, in our definition section since it's already open for tonight. A movable or transportable vehicle or other apparatus commonly used in commercial, industrial, or construction enterprises such as, but not limited to, trucks, trailers, bulldozers, cranes, backhoes, rollers, loaders, and lifts. And so, that would, that provision would help us keep these inappropriate type of things out of residential areas. Coming on down, we did want to make another change. It's under L, storage of items to be fully, to be totally enclosed, rewrote a little bit. Storage of items associated with the nature of the home occupation shall be totally enclosed within the floor area allowed for a home occupation, meaning only the stuff that's really associated with whatever, you know, the business, needs to be enclosed and out of view. N is only two regular-sized work-related vehicles, trailers, are allowed to be parked on-site in the driveway along with personal vehicles belonging to residents of the property and shall not block sidewalks. So, the idea here is that they're, you're having to park them in a way that does not interfere with parking for other people and trying to keep it regulated somewhat, two vehicles. In addition, though, and this is the one that P&amp;Z had to work several times on, what about other stuff? And so, that's where O comes in. Additional standard-sized work-related vehicles or trailers parked on-site are required to have street access to the site and must be parked in the rear or side yard with solid fencing, are prohibited from alley access, and shall not be parked in the street, easements, alleys, or rights-of-way. Again, you can put them in the backyard, you just can't park them in the alleys, easements. These are work-related vehicles associated with a home occupation, not your take-home vehicles, not your, you know, that's what you do for the oil pad company you're with for. These are part, the vehicles that are for that. On the next page is with, for, under prohibited. You see it on page, it starts at the very bottom, and so, we wanted to put in things that, and there is a list of prohibited or how they'd be regulated. And we've got small engine repair, mobile services, none on-site, but that means that they would basically go out from the house, use it as a, an office, and go somewhere else. We're reiterating everything. Contractors, maintenance businesses may request a license for a home occupation for the purpose of scheduling, bookkeeping, and clerical activities only by immediate family members who reside on the property with strict compliance. Basically, that's another thing that a lot of the companies have started with. They start as a bookkeeping, then they keep a couple, then it grows to a couple of trucks and expands that way. And in order to deal with the lift drivers, the, for hire drivers, it's N. Ancest contractors, vehicles for hire may request a license for a home occupation with provisions that no more than two personal vehicles, minivans, 15 passenger vans and limos be permitted for business purposes and only driven by residents residing at the property. Properties may be parked on the property with direct access to the street, may be parked off the street paved surface on the property, and shall not overhang the sidewalk or be parked in the right-of-way, easements, or alleys. Oversized vehicles shall not be permitted. And that basically allowing for their cars, a number of cars, to be used for lift or for hire-type situations. And that basically is it. This went through, like I said, we started planning and zoning in July 2019. It was recommended for approval by P&amp;Z in January. Legal committee heard this in January, February, and May, and recommended approval by a vote of 3-0 on June 25th. Stand for any questions.
All right. Now, Counselor Perry, you had wanted to, you have these changes or amendments?
Mr. Mayor, with it being a, if we want to allow public, if there's anyone here to speak first, I would like that before I start making any amendments or anything. Since it is a public hearing, if we could allow from public first.
All right. We'll go with that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance. As such, even if you did not sign up to vote, to speak on this matter, you may do so at this time. If you are in one of the adjacent rooms, please make your way towards this chamber to speak. Do we have anyone online wishing to speak on this proposed ordinance? Do we have anyone present in the room who wishes to speak on this proposed ordinance? That record reflect, no one in the chamber room indicated they wish to speak on this ordinance. And we have no one online who wishes to speak? Is that correct? That is correct. We have no one online. And Mr. Fuentes, can I ask you again to see if there's anybody moseying down this way from one of the other rooms? No. That's a record reflect, we have no one moving towards the chamber from the other rooms to speak on this proposed ordinance. I'll go back to Counselor Perry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. A couple of things. What got me to looking into everything is I read everything through more carefully again because I did, after an article in the Roswell Daily Record, get many phone calls, concerns, and reservations, and some calls in favor as well. But the calls that had reservations or concerns is because of the vehicle situation. They were worried about them bringing their work trucks home, and let me just say, I think it's vital that we do have some industries that have the ability to bring their work vehicles home. I think that our police department, I think that is a good thing for us to have that presence within, in the communities. I think that plumbers, I sure want, if I call at 2:00 in the morning with an emergency for somebody, be able to get in the car and get to, you know, to come, but most of these are, like plumbers and electricians, those kind may be bringing a work truck home, but they are usually not a home occupation. Most of them, there are some that are that way, but most are, they are in commercial areas, but they're bringing that home because of the nature of their business for, so they're not bringing six trucks home, they're bringing a truck home. So, just as a clarification from those that may be watching tonight or may read later in the newspaper, this does not in any way prohibit bringing your work vehicle home. This is for the, the home occupation and the business that takes place in that home. I did read an article just the other day that talked about a gentleman that's in pest control, and he is very well at what he does. He's done some work on a, in a home that I took care of an elderly lady that had some work done anyway, and I did go over, and I have seen his property and what he does, and he does it very well. And he made some good statements, and what he said is that he has done it long enough that he, he's at a point where he could afford to go and to move if he had to, but someone coming into it new would not, and he did not want to, he was concerned about their abilities. But I think a good point in what he said is that we look at home occupations as an incubator in a lot of situations. Of course, those online and stuff, that's a different ballgame, but like with, like in his industry, that would be an incubator, and somebody's probably not going to be able as an incubator to start with 10 trucks and 10 employees. We hope that, and we encourage for these home occupations to be something that grows to a place where they leave the home and get to their proper place to be able to continue with their industry. So, the concern, the original concern over the trucks or the number of vehicles pretty much became a mute point because it was not dealing with bring-home vehicles, it was dealing with home occupational vehicles. So, I think we got that figured out and taken care of. But in the midst of reading all of this over with more scrutiny, I guess, to just make sure I understood everything, I did have those three changes that I felt were necessary. And that change one, I, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me once just to clarify everything, then I will make a motion to do that. Thank you, sir. Change one would be Article 52, Section 4A2. Location of an accessory structure shall meet the following requirements in subsection C there, or paragraph C if I could say.
Can you give us a page number?
Yes, sir. It's on the form that I gave you there, or it can also be found on page number...
49?
9.
49.
Yes, sir. And two, and then paragraph C or subsection C there, C shall be a minimum of, and I appreciate planning and zoning and the commission being mindful and saying, you know what, let's make it easier on our constituents, those who live in the city, removing it from that 15 to 10-foot. I think that's a thing to be helpful. My concern came in that it just said, or at the direction of planning and zoning staff and these other staffs there. I want property owners to have confidence in knowing that they're not going to be snuffed out of the bill, the ability to have an accessory structure. And the way it's, the verbiage is currently here, that tends to leave that they could be left with potentially not having if, because that could, 30-foot, 40-foot, whatever that may be. So, I got with Mr. Morris, I said, what would be a decent number to put in as a maximum to where at least there is a measuring stick to know what they could be in between determining from directive? So, that's where the, or a maximum of 25-foot comes into play. And change number two would be under definitions, but the concern for that came, if you will go to page number 53, and that would be in paragraph H there, under Section 3, General Guidelines for Minor and Major Home Occupations, no oversized vehicle or construction heavy equipment shall be stored on use of the property. Well, what is construction heavy equipment? What is that? Well, I think I know what that is, but my definition may be totally different than someone else's, and we don't want to be left in that sway, so I asked Mr. Morris to bring us a clear definition. Construction and heavy equipment that would be added to Article 4, Section 2 in definitions that would be a movable or transportable vehicle or other apparatus commonly used in commercial, industrial, or co- commercial, industrial, or construction enterprises such as, but not limited to, trucks, trailers, bulldozers, cranes, backhoes, rollers, loaders, and lifts. I think of one situation in particular, I won't say where, but here in town, I guess about 10 years ago, someone had a, I'm assuming a home occupation was bringing bulldozers and backhoes and different things home, and they were having to come through the alley to get into their property. But the backhoe was too tall to come underneath the electrical lines, so he'd have to move everything, pull it down, get it inside on the trailer, and then put it back up. And there was all this equipment in the back of the yard, and that was a dangerous situation. And so I do recognize the need to consider some of those things, so that's where that definition comes from. The third change would be in Article 62, Section 3, and then L, which is there on the same page of 53. I had much concern over storage of items shall not be enclosed. Well, number one, what does enclosed mean? You know, is a cardboard box enclosed? Is a, is a, is the back of a truck enclosed? What do we consider enclosed? And then also, what items? Is it any items that is on premises? Is it items? What, so my definite, what I would like added there is by the word items, add the words associated with the nature of the home occupation. And then the word shall be totally enclosed. And then what was stricken, put that back in within the floor area allowed for a home occupation. And I think that that still leaves some room for understanding, but at the same time gives us, and I did speak with Mr. Patterson as well on this, and I appreciate his patience with me as well, and both of these men agreed that these would be appropriate for that. Last but not least, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Counselor Stubbs did find two things, they're very minor, and it's just two words to be put in, but I agree with Counselor Stubbs, they should be put in. And that would be on page 55, letters K and letters M. On K, onsite and mobile repair service, and then it strikes the verbiage, and then it starts with small appliances, computers, and electronics. So it would add the words such as, take away what's there, the parentheses, and then small appliances, computers, and electronics, period, take away the other parentheses. That would just allow for such as to take place of those parentheses. The same thing in M, contractors, maintenance businesses, take out the parenthesis, i.e., and add in the verbiage such as. And then at the very end of everything, okay, and then the parentheses taken out after landscapers and adding a period. So that's very basic there. If there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, or any other concerns, I can yield or I can make a motion at this point.
The key question is going to be whether we try to act on these separately or go ahead and use it as a lump sum. And Counselor Stubbs?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just thinking separately so we can look at them individually because they're related, but they're individual statements.
That case, Counselor Perry?
Okay.
Go ahead and start.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend on the portion of Article 52, Section 4A, and then two, location of accessory structures shall meet the following requirements in that subsection or paragraph C. My motion is to add the verbiage or a maximum of 25 feet between 10-foot and the word at. So it would read, shall be a minimal of 10-foot or maximum of 25-foot at the discretion of planning and zoning staff and the city engineer to ensure clear sight triangle from the street-side yard property line for corner lots.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Perry.
Are we using the boxes for this as well or not? Yes?
Okay. A motion by Counselor Perry and a second by Counselor Stubbs to amend the proposed ordinance 20-08, which we're on page, what, 49?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. All right, I'm not going to try and reiterate that. My key question is, is Ms. Call and Mr. Patterson confident that they know exactly what the intended changes are? Let the record reflect, both Ms. Call and Mr. Patterson nodded in the affirmative. All right, any discussion or debate on the proposed change one or proposed amendment as presented by Counselor Perry? Hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or a I approves this amendment, a no or nay rejects the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment as presented signify by saying aye and activate your vote box.
Aye.
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 Counselor Orpessa, we don't have your vote yet.
Well, you didn't say oppose, I'm opposing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, all those opposed say nay. Sorry, I thank you, Counselor. And we have eight to two. The opposition is Counselor Orpessa and Peterson. The passes, the amendment passes. So, Counselor Perry, back to you again.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance 20-08. Addition to definition sections, which is Article 4, Section 2, to add the definition construction slash heavy equipment to read as follows, a movable or transportable vehicle or other apparatus commonly used in commercial, industrial, or construction enterprises such as, but not limited to, trucks, trailers, bulldozers, cranes, backhoes, rollers, loaders, and lifts.
All right, and what page is that on?
That would, Mr. Mayor, that would be found on pa, well, definitions would be found on page.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Okay.
That's where that would be going in.
All right, page forty-five.
No, definitions is Article 4, which is on page 33. Section 1, modification of Article 4, definitions, section 2, definitions.
I apologize, I'm looking at the one with all the yellow tape, so, which is the forty-five, so it could be, yes.
Mr. Patterson, will you repeat that again? Where would this go?
The definition sections of the zoning code is Article 4, Section 2, which is on page 33 of the packet.
Okay, 33. I have a motion by Counselor Perry and a second by Counselor Kenard to add a definition for construction and heavy equipment. Any discussion or debate on this proposed amendment? Counselor Robuck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a clarification, if this language doesn't go in there, what happens?
You mean the construction?
Yes, this, if we don't add this definition, is it?
It just makes things a little muddier.
Okay. Is it, because it says included but not limited to, so we can still make this scope as wide as we want to with this, with this language.
But this covers virtually everything that we're talking about.
But it doesn't, I guess, Mr. Patterson, if you could, does this effectively change the power of the, of it one way or the other, if this is in there?
It simply provides a clarification as to the meaning of the term. And so the examples at the end are exactly that, examples of the general principle stated in the first part of the definition.
Okay.
And so they don't, they're not saying these are the only ones, they're saying these are examples of the types of things we're talking about.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Perry? Okay. Any other comments on this proposed amendment? Once again, we'll do a voice vote, a yes or a I approves this amendment, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And activate your vote boxes. And we don't have a vote for Counselor Moore.
Counselor Moore, could we hear your vote? I'm sorry.
Yes.
And the vote is eight to two with Counselors Peterson and Orpessa objecting. Next up is Counselor Perry, change three.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, I was using the page numbers as associated with still the line strike through, so I will go to using the clean copy. I think that's clear for everyone. I make a motion to amend a proposed change ordinance 20-08 to include under Article 62 on page 41, Section 3, paragraph or letter L, storage of items, add the, I add the following verbiage, associated with the nature of the home occupation, and then the following verbiage shall be totally enclosed, add the following verbiage within the floor area allowed for a home occupation, period.
All right, I have a motion, Counselor, yep, a motion by Counselor Perry to amend the proposed ordinance and a second by Counselor Kenard. Any debate or discussion on this proposed amendment? Hearing none, seeing none, once again, we'll have a voice vote. All those in favor of this will signify by saying aye, those opposed say nay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I have a vote of eight to two with Counselors Peterson and Orpessa opposed. Now, the page 55, letters K and M, can we do those together, Counselor Perry?
That's fine, yes, sir.
Okay.
I think so.
Do you want to go ahead and make those amendments since you brought them up?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we amend the current areas of the ordinance 20-08 on page 43 of the clean copy. Letter K, onsite and mobile repair services, take away the parentheses, add the verbiage such as, then continue with reading, small appliances, comma, computer, comma, and electronics, remove the parentheses, and it just ends with the period. Under L would be small engine repair as a mobile service, I'm sorry, M, I apologize, contractors, maintenance businesses, strike the parentheses, strike i.e. and the comma, add the verbiage such as, then continued reading of mobile washes, comma, landscapers, remove the parentheses, and continue with the comma.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Perry, please activate the motion button. And a second by Counselor Kenard. Now, Mr. Patterson, are you comfortable you know exactly what the proposed amendment is?
Yes.
Ms. Call, the same?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this proposed amendment? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll now have a voice vote. A yes or a I approves the amendment as presented, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, I'm not getting the vote results up here. There we go. All right, eight to two with Counselors Peterson and Orpessa in opposition. We are back on an amended proposed ordinance 20-08. Counselor Perry, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have Counselor Foster. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 41 or page 53, whichever one you want to look at, on O, and I talked to Mr. Morris prior to this, but then more reading this, I'm not comfortable with the prohibited from alley access because under our ordinance now, unless the alley's paved, you can't have alley access. But now, if our alley is paved, just because now we're saying it's prohibited, this ordinance will say it's prohibited, and in our other city ordinance, it says it's allowed if it's paved. Well, so if we have one that says yes and one that says no, Mr. Peterson, or Patterson, sorry, would it be allowed?
Hmm, I think you would have a stat, or an ordinance conflict there, and you would have to apply some rules of interpretation, how that would come out. Arguably, since this is specific to home occupations, it would only prohibit home occupations. Are prohibited from alley. So we could, to fix this question, you could add there, are prohibited from unpaved alley access.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to change section O to, for it to read prohibited from unpaved alley access.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Foster and a second by Counselor Perry to amend and add the term unpaved in front of alley access, or from, make it from unpaved alley access.
Where did it from?
Once again, Ms. Call, Mr. Patterson, are you comfortable with understanding the intent of this proposed amendment?
I understand it.
Yes.
And Ms. Call, same thing? All right, we are now on an issue of an amended amendment to the proposed, amended proposed ordinance. Any discussion on Counselor Foster's amendment? Seeing none, I will ask for a voice vote, excuse me, a voice vote, a yes or a I approves the amendment, a no or nay rejects it. Let the record reflect, Counselor Best has stepped away. So, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, I have a vote of.
Counselor Moore, we did not hear your vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
A vote of seven to two, the amendment passes, opposition Orpessa and Peterson. All right, Counselor, you still have the floor. All right, we have Counselor Robuck and then Counselor Orpessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of issues, and I think that I want to, I want to really express. First of all, when we were first talking about this, we were talking about taking care of it, it's very specific, particular issue of dealing with vehicles that are causing nuisances for their neighbors because they're either oversized or an issue. And I, I am not comfortable with taking, I would have rather us dealt with that in a very narrow, very narrowly, whereas this all of a sudden brings in not only a ton of things about that and then into home occupations, but then also we decided, hey, let's go ahead and pick a bunch of cleanup as well. I'm really dealing with what should be several ordinances, it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff. And as we saw this evening, we had an appeal that was a split vote on the P&amp;Z and a split vote here, these are not easy issues. And when you're talking about setbacks, these have a lot of, people have a lot of concern about these issues. And so I, I think that, while I appreciate the staff's idea about hitting efficiency, I don't think that, that I can really vote for, vote for these all as one, as one piece together. So, specifically to the home occupations though, I will speak to that, is I am, I'm concerned there's no definition of what a small and, what are the two words we use here? Minor and major, there's no definition of what that is. And if you read the different types of things that apply to one or the other, it's not really, it's not clear, even in the context of what would define a major or a minor. There's no way for someone, especially someone who's just in a home business, for them to understand what category they would, they would fall into. There's no, there's no easy clear reading on this. And so I feel like this is a case where the, we've taken a small problem and the bureaucracy has expanded, perhaps unnecessarily, I don't know that for everything in all this thing, but at this point, because of that definition issue, there's a lack of clarity there and also just because. just because of the, this has grown to a lot of things that I don't, I didn't have, I didn't, I haven't had anybody come to me and say, hey, home businesses are an issue that the city needs to deal with. I haven't heard that, I haven't seen that, I don't have a decision to tell you. I don't, I don't, I don't feel inclined to, to approve a change that, that has not come up from the constituents. Um, again, I was told that there was going to be some cleanup things, but these are some significant, major changes. These aren't just cleaning up ordinance issues. This isn't, this isn't housekeeping. I don't think any of these things are housekeeping in this, and there are significant, uh, material changes to the, to the, to the ordinance. Uh, and so, for that reason, I'm going to be voting against this tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have Counsel Oropesa, and that exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a matter of clarification. Uh, is any of this, uh, changes that we're looking at, are, is there going to be a grandfathered-in type of situation where individuals that are currently having vehicles in their, semi-vehicles with trailers in their property already, are they going to be allowed to be grandfathered-in and, or is this going to be retroactive and apply to them?
I think that the intent was to try to work with the, the people as their licenses get renewed over time, uh, to bring them into compliance, but not to allow it to continue as a standard. But no, the idea is to try to eliminate this as a problem. It's not going to be retroactive. We're not going to go next unlocking, uh, on doors tomorrow. The intent here is to say, okay, when their licenses come up for renewal, let's see what we can do.
Okay.
To get them changed.
Because I know, I know there are several, several, uh, businesses, especially in my, my district, that, that fall into this category.
Okay.
And, you know, I personally believe that this is probably the wrong time to try to pass, uh, this type of, uh, changes, considering the challenging times that we're living in as far as the pandemic is concerned, and, and the, the, this type of changes, obviously it's going to create some, uh, restrictions on, on some of, of the, uh, members out there that have perhaps a, a semi-truck or whatever, and not to mention, is going to, is going to create an additional expense as to where they can park their, their vehicles, if they're not going to be allowed to park the vehicles in, in their lot, and their lot is big enough to, to support one or two, uh, trailers and so forth, as long as, and I understand the, the issue, if they were a corner property, and, and they, they parked their trucks to where, uh, traffic, uh, was obstructed, I, I can understand those situations, but I, I don't understand the ones where they have plenty of room for them to, to be able to, to park their, their vehicles, and, and if this is a primary way of life, and all of a sudden we're coming down and saying, I'm sorry, but you can't continue parking your vehicle here, you're going to have to find someplace else, and they have no, nowhere else, they're going to find themselves in a, in a bind. And so I, I, you know, I have a hard time supporting this, because we're, 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 uh, almost requiring them to find money so they can abide by the, the changes. And, and like I said, in this point in time, it's, it's very hard. And as far as the, the easements are concerned, you know, you have, uh, vehicles or even, even cars, uh, depending on the size of the easement, whether they block, uh, traffic, uh, or, or obstruct people from, from being able to use a sidewalk. Uh, you know, I, I don't see the reason why people cannot put their cars or park their cars in an easement if they're not obstructing the ability of people to walk through on, on the sidewalk, because it seems to me it's, it's a lot more safer to park on an easement than to park on the, on the street. And, and because, and especially, I don't, I don't know if, if you've gone through, uh, through Hendrix, East Hendrix, uh, just east of Atkinson, I mean, if you want to call that a street, you can call it a street, but it actually is not a street. It's more like an alley. And so you put this kind of restrictions on, especially on, on that part of the town, you're making a hardship for those people. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. That exhausts my list. I have no one else who has indicated they wish to speak on this matter. Therefore, I will call for a roll call vote, since this is an ordinance, a yes or aye approves proposed ordinance twenty dash zero eight as amended, a no or nay rejects it. Once again, a yes or aye approves proposed ordinance twenty dash zero eight as amended, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
No.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Robach?
No.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kenard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Six to four, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is at the recommendation of the legal committee that I move to hold a public hearing and approve ordinance twenty dash oh-nine, amending Chapter twenty-one of the Roswell City Code relating to solid waste collection and disposal.
I have a motion by Counsel Stubbs, please activate the motion box. Oops, no, we haven't, hang on, let's try that again. Okay, motion by Stubbs, second by Peterson, to approve proposed ordinance twenty dash zero nine. Mr. Patterson?
Good evening again, Mayor and Counselors. Uh, as the motion indicated with this item, we're asking you to consider adopting, uh, ordinance which would make revisions to our existing city code relating to solid waste collection. Uh, so we saw this last time, but just as a refresher, uh, the municipal act, uh, the municipal code and statute gives the municipality exclusive authority to regulate the collection of solid waste, uh, uses the term refuse. You can see the definition there, it's basically all kinds of solid garbage that you can think of. Uh, and it further gives this municipality the power to either do that solid waste collection itself, or to contract that out to an independent contractor, and to, uh, charge a fee for those services to property owners, whether those property owners use that collection service or not. Uh, so just to give a little bit of background and explanation, these changes originated out of a discussion between, uh, staff and solid waste and the city attorney's office about, uh, some of our franchisees that do solid waste collection for us. So that concept of doing, contracting out our solid waste, and, and we had sort of a bunch of different agreements out there, that some of them were quite old, and we didn't really know what the status of some of that was. And so we wanted to clean up that whole process, and the first step we decided to take was to look back at the ordinance, at the city code relating to solid waste collection, and see if we could make that a little more coherent to what we were going for and what our objective was with regard to, uh, what we wanted to do, and then what we were expecting our franchisees doing this service, uh, with our permission, we're going to do. So, uh, the first thing that we're, we did was we went to this colle- this definition of collection of solid waste, and the idea there was to, uh, refine the definition, to focus on the concept of a collection service, the idea being there's some businesses and companies whose primary job, or their primary service that they render is collecting waste for different individuals. Uh, so those are the people that we're looking at, uh, franchising to. Uh, and the, and that's also the service that we provide, um, when, when we're doing solid waste collection. So this is not something that is going to apply to people who take their own refuse to this, to the dump, and it's not going to apply to businesses that are providing some other service, and they do some cleanup and removal as an ancillary part of that. So the example would be if somebody does, uh, yard work and then takes those trimmings away, that's not solid waste collection, that's, uh, ancillary to the primary service of cleaning up your yard. Uh, we're focusing on those businesses that their service model is collecting. So then, uh, this next revision, uh, addresses the part of the ordinance where we basically exercise that exclusive right. We say we are the, uh, as the municipality, we have that exclusive right to engage in the collection of solid waste in the municipality. And then it goes on to say, and if you want to do it, you need to get a franchise from us. So we're asserting our exclusive authority over all collection as previously defined, and then permitting different companies to get a franchise from us along the terms that we, uh, decide are appropriate. Finally, uh, the second part of, uh, what we're doing here is, uh, to, along with what we're doing throughout several of our, uh, ordinances and provisions, is to take a lot of the fees that we have in ordinance and take those out of ordinance and put them into a resolution form, uh, which can be, uh, adopted by the city council. The idea there being that, uh, resolutions are a much more nimble, uh, way to address fees which do change on a fairly regular basis, potentially, at least as markets change. And so it's a nimbler way to approach it as opposed to ordinances which require quite a bit of lead time in order to, uh, address them. So we're deleting all the fees that are currently set forth in resolution, I mean, sorry, in ordinance, and putting them into a fee resolution, which is going to be the next item, which we'll see. Uh, just to give a little bit of, of history here, this, it's a little bit convoluted. It went, this res- this ordinance went twice to legal in May and June, and both times it was not heard because of lack of a quorum. Uh, in July, it was placed on, uh, the city council's agenda at the request of the mayor, with, uh, the request being to, uh, advertise and hold a public hearing. Uh, that was, uh, approved by the council. Then it went, uh, was taken up again at the July legal committee meeting, with the idea being that, uh, we could get committee approval for the ordinance prior to the, uh, public hearing. Uh, at the July meeting, the legal committee did, uh, vote to, uh, recommend approval, but, uh, one of the concerns that was raised was that there's, uh, kind of a little bit of an inconsistency with regard to, uh, who in the existing ordinance is responsible for paying solid waste fees. In one section it says the property owner, and in another section it says the person whose name is on the water meter. And that could be the same person, but it might not be. And so it was felt that we needed to address that. And so the recommendation was to approve it with, subject to figuring out what to do with that. And so, uh, after legal, I went and talked with, uh, staff and solid waste, and, uh, it was determined that the best approach would be to have it just, all the sections talk about the owner of the property is the one responsible for paying the solid waste fees, which is also the way it's addressed in statute. And so, and when you look through your packet on the red line version, uh, what I've tried to do to illustrate that is that the red stuff is what was originally considered when you recommended this for advertising, and then I did in blue what is, the changes that came out of the legal, uh, in July. So that, uh, will give you some context there. Uh, so with that, uh, that I will stand for any questions.
All right, so, just for clarification, the action we would take will be on the version that includes the blue.
Correct.
All right, so Counselors, it's the blue and red version that we will take action upon. This is a public hearing, and as such, even if someone present did not sign up to vo- uh, speak on this matter, they may do so at this time. If you are in one of the other rooms, I will ask you to come here to the council chamber to speak if you wish to. Is there anyone currently in this room wishing to speak on this proposed ordinance? Let the record reflect, no one in this room wishes to speak on this ordinance. Is there anyone online wishing to speak on this proposed ordinance? Let their record ref- reflect that no one online wishes to speak on this ordinance. Mr. Fuentes, do you see anyone coming this way? Let the record reflect that there is no one coming from any of the other rooms to speak on this particular matter. Um, I think it's only fair that I confess to my, uh, role in this, in that I have been an instigator wanting to have this, these, this whole section addressed. And the reason why is the current ordinance that exists on our books treats drop-off, commercial pickup, and residential pickup fee increases differently. In other words, one has a cost of living increase based upon CPI, two others have had no increases, four, in one case, three years, in the other, four years. So my personal position and reason why I've encouraged Counsel Stubbs to take this on is that we need to treat everyone the same. So that was my role in pushing for this, and Mr. Patterson's been very patient, as I check every six months. All right, on that note, anyone wishing to speak or ask questions on this proposed ordinance? I see no one wishing to do so. This is an ordinance, we will have a roll call vote, a yes or aye approves the proposed ordinance as presented. Once again, it's the version with both the red and blue changes, a no or nay rejects the proposed ordinance. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kenard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, nine to one, Counsel Oropesa in opposition. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, items number eight through fourteen were adopted when the agenda was adopted as they were part of what's referred to as the consent agenda. We are now on item number fifteen. Counselors, just so you know, it's eight o'clock, I would like to take action on this proposed resolution, and then we will take a short break. So, uh, Counsel Perry, item number fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, at the recommendation of the finance committee, I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty dash forty-eight establishing fees and charges as more particularly set forth herein.
I have a motion by Counsel Perry, and a second by Counsel Kenard to approve Resolution twenty dash forty-eight. Mr. Fuentes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. So this resolution now follows the action taken by the council on ordinance twenty oh-nine. So this resolution now proposes to adopt those fees that had been removed from that ordinance and now re-adopt them in a form of resolution. Uh, so basically, we're just placing them in the resolution without any change as far as the rates or so forth. There will be a rate study that will be forthcoming on the solid waste as well as water and wastewater, and at this time, we're just simply re-adopting those fees by resolution. And with that, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I will stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions or, Counsel Perry?
Mr. Mayor, just clarification, uh, if we don't, as a council, approve this, then we receive no monies for, uh, because it, it no longer exists in ordinance, correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Perry, that is correct, but I believe an ordinance becomes effective five days before we can, uh, so we have a five-day window to
So for five days?
To repeal, that's right.
Just as a clarification for the council to recognize that when we do vote on this, a vote against would, would indeed put us without collecting fees for this area. Thank you.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? This is a, this is a resolution, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. A yes or a i approves Resolution 20-48, a no or a nay rejects it. And Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Motion passes eight to two.
All right. Councilors. Councilors, it is 8:02. I'd like to propose that we take an eight-minute recess. We will reconvene here at 8:10.
She likes her words, Smithen. You like your words, Smithen.
All right. All right, it's 8:10. We're back in session. Item number 16, Counselor Best.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2038, concurring that the city manager finding a public nuisance and assessing cost of additional nuisance activities.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Counselor Best and a second by Counselor Stubbs to approve Resolution 20-38. Mr. Morris.
Good evening. As you know, this item was previously presented to the city council. There were some questions that came out of that, and so, staff was directed to take this back to public safety to make some changes, and then, we have done so, and then are bringing those changes back to you tonight. Pursuant to the city's chronic nuisance ordinance, the city council is required to adopt a resolution of concurrence in the city manager's determination to assess costs against chronic nuisance properties. The properties that are identified in Resolution 20-38 have cost the city through calls associated with nuisance activities. And in your packet, like last time, you have evidence of that through the call logs, the, and the costs associated with code enforcement. This resolution would permit the city to charge the property owner for such costs as a special charge. Now, the two properties we're talking about are.
Mr. Morris, can you get a little closer to microphone?
Yes, sir. Sorry. 209 East Demming and 605 West 13th. 209 West Demming is located to the east of Main Street, a couple of blocks. This is the property, there's been a murder here and some other activities. This is the official charge letter sent by the code enforcement supervisor, Bill Bartlett, to the owner, Jane Chavez and Christina Archuleta. The second property, 605 West 13th Street. And this one here, you can see a couple of pictures. This is the official charge letter that was sent by Bill Bartlett to Robert Rodriguez, who is the owner of this same property. All notification requirements have been taken with this process. As I stated earlier, during the July 9, 2020 presentation, this item, to the city council, staff was directed to make some modifications which were needed to the resolution and resubmit it through the public safety. This resolution has been modified and represented to the Public Safety Commission on July 14, which recommended approval with the following text modifications. And this, these are listed, starting on the bottom of page 120. On number one, city council does concur in the findings provided by the city manager that the properties identified in this resolution do constitute nuisance properties as determined in Article 4 of Chapter 16 of the Roswell City Code. Straight off, yes, they're problem child nuisance properties. Number two, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to issue to the owners of the premise demand for payment for any fees accumulated after a determination of the properties being nuisance, of the properties being nuisance properties. So, afterwards, all costs associated after, if those properties are now deemed tonight through you guys, all properties afterwards can be charged to those property, to the owner. Number three, a determination of being a nuisance property will stay in effect until the property owner is able to demonstrate that adequate, that adequate controls have been established to abate all adverse impacts to the neighborhood emanating from that nuisance property. And that means that everything stays the same until whatever owner, whoever the owner is, is able to demonstrate to the city manager that things have been taken care of. And as I stated before, public safety did hear this and recommended approval by a vote of 4-0, and staff is still recommending approval of Resolution 20-38.
All right. Thank you.
And I have to admit, in the actual resolution that you have, there's one that, Chapter 3 is duplicated somehow. We'll take one of those out.
Okay. Say that one more time.
On page 121 at the top, one of the chapters, one of the paragraphs got duplicated twice.
Oh, yeah. I see that now. Okay, so.
We'll modify that.
All right. Councilors, questions or comments regarding proposed Resolution 20-38? Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I want to say that I am not supporting this resolution mainly because there is a possibility of people losing their houses if they're not able to pay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, oh, Counselor Moore?
I have a kind of a question. I think, we're going to bring things, I think they need to be individual. I don't think we need to group houses just because one thing had one thing and the other. I don't mind if we're going to do them, I think they need to be individual and not two or three houses at a time because there are two or three incidents. One I might agree with, and the other one I do not. So, I think if we're going to have this concept, we should do one house at a time and not group two or three. If you bring five together, we vote them all at the same time. I have issues with that because one of them I agree with and one of them I don't. So, it's kind of in that concept, I have to vote yes or no, agree with one and don't agree with the other, you know, the reasoning for the other one. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's a legitimate point, Mr. Neb. We can do that in the future. Any other questions or comments? All right. I'll ask for a roll call vote. A yes or a i approves proposed Resolution 20-38, a no or a nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Motion passes seven to three.
Seven to three. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, item number 17, Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get my place in the page. Mr. Mayor, at the recommendation of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-49, which would be for filing of an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for funding assistance of public transportation for the federal fiscal year 2021, 2022.
I have a motion by Counselor Perry and a second by Counselor Kennard to approve Resolution 20-49. Ms. Hicks, welcome.
Hello. How is everybody tonight?
Tired.
Yes, I'm getting that way myself. So, this is an annual request. The federal government requires that we submit our budget a year in advance, and so, I know that we just passed the '21 budget, but now, I need to ask for '22. We have not yet submitted this to the NMDOT, so this is you telling us that you're willing to finance us for fiscal year '22 so that they can consider our application for the budget. And you can see that they reimburse us 50% of operating expenses that they have approved and 80% of the administrative and capital costs. Our budget request from them is $2,089,098.50, and yes, we have to put the 50 cents. And their reimbursement to us would be $1,253,836.30, and we would be requesting from the city $835,262.20.
All right. Any questions or comments on this particular item? All right. We will have a vote on this. I will ask for a roll call vote. A yes or a i approves Resolution 20-49, a no or a nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Sanchez, activate the vote box. Is it too late? There it is. Okay. Ten to zero. Thank you. Next up, item number 18, Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me just say that, given that this motion will probably need to be amended, I still move to approve Resolution 20-50, authorizing the mayor to submit the 2022 through 2026 five-year infrastructure capital improvement plan with the State of New Mexico Department of Finance. of Finance and Administration Local Government Division.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Kenner to approve Resolution 20-50. Mr. Fuentes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and counselors. So this is the annual resolution that municipalities are required to adopt to submit a plan, an ICIP plan, to the state. So just briefly to summarize, the ICIP, the ICIP is the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, which is a plan that establishes the planning priorities for anticipated capital projects, assists legislators in determining capital allocations every legislative session. The ICIP covers a five-year rolling timeframe. This year will be for 2022 to 2026. The ICIP also indicates the top five projects the city is interested in funding. As an example, I just wanted to share what we did last year. The council adopted the ICIP and included the top five. So as you can see, number one, the all-inclusive park was the first priority project with an estimated project cost of $1.5 million. The state legislature did allocate $1.4 million to the city, the Little League Ballfields being the second project, estimated cost of $13 million. We did get the first, the design phase for this project at $850,000. Unfortunately, projects three and four, which was the Bridge 1691 and the tennis courts, they did receive some allocations during the session. However, the, those projects were vetoed by the governor with the COVID-19 pandemic, right, just when it started, and number five wasn't funded. So this is the list now that of all of the projects that were presented to each of the committees, and as you can see there, we start with RAC and then we, infrastructure, with legal infrastructure. Some of the departments have one, or they may have two, and there's just a few that have three projects. So General Services, you know, went through all of those different departments, and of course, we have Public Safety and Finance as well. So the resolution, what I wanted to show, illustrate here is that the council, to some extent, already started addressing some of those projects that were prioritized as number one priorities in the upcoming budget. We've been talking about, for example, the dispatch project. That was one of the priority projects that was listed for Public Safety for $420,000. We also talked about the library roof project that will be forthcoming as well. That was also a priority project number one for the library under General Services, and we also talked about the library building project that will be another action item down the road in the agenda with the damage of the water line break. So that's also listed as a potential already being funded. And of course, the council already took some action with the CDBG Boys and Girls Club Building. So what we're asking tonight, of course, is now that we have the new list of projects for consideration and review, the full listing of the ICIP is provided for review and ranking. Now, what you have before you is a list of 54 projects. Funding needed is, for all of those projects, is 37 million. Once the list is approved, we will submit the list to the state under their website for submission to meet the deadline. We understand the project is a long list of projects, and at this time, staff in concurrence with management is recommending that a special meeting be scheduled so that there would be more time to kind of review all this, this long list of projects and be able to prioritize and rank the projects and develop the ICIP plan. With that, we did include a couple of calendars for August and September to maybe find a date that will work for the, for the mayor and council for the special meeting. And with that, Mayor, I will stand for any questions.
Counsel, full disclosure, Mr. Neb and I have been talking about this, and I would like to throw out for consideration the idea of a special council meeting on September 3rd, that would be a Thursday, and a chance for us to really delve into the priorities you have before you, the information. You would have an opportunity to visit with staff, constituents, and each other and identify what you think are the priorities that we need to pursue. This is a big bite. I think it's more than we can do tonight. And Mr. Neb, do you want to add anything to that?
No, sir. I, we believe that the special session will at least put you all in the room together to walk through what all the priorities were for the departments and formalize the final pieces of this. We do have to have a list in, the resolution has to be approved by September 18th, and so there is time for that, and I believe that in the, in the spirit of the communication, it would be better to tackle this thing together as a one-item issue at that time, so.
All right. Questions or comments, counselors? Do I, Counselor Perry, you look like you're-
Just a recommendation, if there is indeed going to be a meeting on that Thursday, the 3rd, I would like just consideration of maybe an earlier than 6 o'clock meeting if possible.
Yeah. What do you think about, here's my thought. Thursday, the 3rd at 4 o'clock, would that be acceptable, Mr.?
I would, that would be amenable. I'm just trying to-
Anybody objecting to that? Counselor Peterson, I'm sorry. Okay. Would you have a better alternative?
And I would be amenable to 5 o'clock.
Okay, we go for 5? One once, one twice? All right, we'll shoot for 5 o'clock, we'll send out the official announcement.
We do have a motion on the table.
Ah, so we will entertain a motion to table-
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared. I am prepared.
You are prepared.
Yes. I would like to withdraw my motion and move to postpone voting on the ICIP at this time and to hold a special city council meeting on Thursday, September 3rd at 5:00 PM to specifically discuss the selection of our top five projects and vote on Resolution 20-50 when complete.
All right. Ms. Call, do you have that?
Second.
I believe we do. Counselor Stubbs first made her motion, and then she withdrew her motion, and then she redid the motion to have a special session on September 3rd with the second by Perry, so we got it.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on this change? Any debate? Any questions?
I think, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure who it was, that we need to ask the second term of my main motion if, was it you? Oh, it was-
Counselor Kenner.
Oh, Kenner?
Yes.
If it's okay to withdraw.
Yes.
All right. Counselor Kenner authorizes withdrawal of the original motion. All right, so we have a substitute motion with a second by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? I'll ask for a voice vote on this one, a yes or aye approves the substitute motion to establish a September 3rd special session of the council to act upon Resolution 20-50, a no or nay rejects that concept. All those in favor of the substitute motion to meet on September 3rd signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the vote is 10 to 0. All right, thank you very much. Next item up, item number 19, Counselor Perry.
Mr. Mayor, at the recommendation of the Finance Committee, I make a motion that we direct and instruct the city manager to arrange for an audit of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce and to explore re-establishing a relationship between the city of Roswell and the Roswell Chamber of Commerce.
I have a motion by Counselor Perry when he activates his motion box area, and a second by Counselor Best to provide instruction to the city manager on seeking an audit and exploring relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Neb?
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council, I'll just cover some of the background with where we were at because the motion put on the table was a little bit different than the conversation that we had at the Finance Committee. And so I just want to make sure you understand the differences, and then we can discuss why those differences are there. But this matter was, is put before the city council because of the differences of opinions of to what a chamber audit would actually accomplish for us, the hows and whys of how to complete that. This is just the background on it. On February 24th, the city did request a full audit of the, of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce finances at that point in time. There were concerns that were shared at that time that, that just, we believed that the audit would alleviate any of our fears or our concerns at that time. It would resolve those issues. On March 12th, we did receive an immediate termination request from the chamber, and that's, our service agreement actually provides for a 60-day termination clause. And so in order to meet the, the conditions of an immediate termination, we had tied the stipulation or the condition that a full audit would be done at that time in order to recognize the immediate termination. At that point and going, moving forward, there had been conversations with the Roswell Chamber as to the selection of the, of the company, the conversation with that. So on June 18th, the Finance Department did complete its interviews, provided a recommendation on two firms. One was selected by the city, the other was selected by the chamber. I will say that both of the parties see the value of completing the audit in my conversations with the chamber president, and you will see that a majority of their executive committee is in attendance tonight because of the importance of this. However, the chamber board did express some concerns because they were not kept up to date within that process. There were some challenges internally that made it difficult for them to stay abreast of where the city was at. The chamber was invited to participate in the interviews, however, I don't believe that information got to the chamber board appropriately. And so if, if you approve what has been put onto the floor, the city will be working with the chamber to correct those concerns. The city and the Roswell Chamber believe in maintaining that transparency and integrity in their respective missions. This matter was heard at the Finance Committee and moved to full city council on an affirmative vote of 2 to 1 based upon the, the actual firm and the dollar amount. So with the, with the change in the, in the, in the request, I'll stand for any questions with that change.
All right. I actually had some folks sign up to speak on this one. Let's go to those individuals. I have three individuals who signed up. Ryan Versiglio, sorry about that, and Nick Snowberger and Andrea Moore. So come on up. You state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes.
Ryan Versiglio, 1802 North Maryland. Good evening, distinguished city council members. I would like to respectfully state my opinion on a matter that needs discussion, and that would be the nature of the board of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce. The executive director was one of the major issues, but the board was the other serious issue. The board of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce consistently showed a lack of interest in the chamber's activities. They were disinterested in coming to schedule meetings, which had to constantly be rescheduled, employee affairs and issues, and genuinely disinterested in managing the executive director. The executive director discouraged us, the employees, from talking to the board even when we tried to ask the board for help regarding the executive director. The only answer we got to our problem was silence. We asked the board for help numerous times but received nothing. When my coworkers and I left the chamber, we respectfully asked for exit interviews but received none. Even now with the executive director gone, we have not been contacted, and my question would be why, when we can assist by providing clarity? For these reasons, I believe the board of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce to be incompetent in their decision-making and should be restructured with the rest of the chamber. It is my belief that a proper restructuring, if a proper restructuring is to take place, it needs to start with the audit as well as reforming the board. The audit will provide full transparency and shed a light on any issues the chamber has, which will offer better insight on how to better manage the chamber and restructure it. Restructuring the board will provide fresh ideas and intuition on how to better manage the chamber and any future executive director. I'm glad to see steps being taken in the right direction. My hope is that I continue seeing steps being taken to restructure the chamber to make it a better place. With that being said, I have spoken my piece and my mind, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Nick Snowberger. Is Mr. Snowberger not here anymore? All right, Ms. Andrea Moore.
My name is Andrea Moore, 2101 Ristra Road, and I am the new president of the Chamber of Commerce. I was elected January 7th, so I have been in this position just slightly over 30 days. And I, I come to you after we have spoke with, as an executive committee, and we are absolutely in agreement to go forward with the audit. The few things that I did want to let everybody know is that on August 3rd, which was a Monday, Candace Purcella did resign from the Chamber of Commerce. She did give us notice, and there is no animosity between the board and Candace as she continues to pursue whatever she has decided to go do in the future. With that being said, it is a personnel issue, and there are a lot of things that we are not able to discuss because we have signed confidentiality agreements, just as everybody at the city also has signed personnel confidentiality agreements when it comes to personnel issues. And as far as not being or being complicit in some of the things that have happened in the past, I personally was never once addressed by any private, previous employee with any kind of concern. And if there were concerns, every single person had my personal phone number, knows where I live, knew how to get ahold of me personally. I have also spoke with board members that were on the board over the course of the last three and a half years, and not one of those board members was ever approached in any way. And many of our previous board members were regulars at the Chamber of Commerce and would go in on purpose on days when the executive director wasn't there and ask questions. We hold regular board meetings at the same time every single month. Any previous employee could have come in and addressed any concerns at that time. With that said, we are in a reorganization phase. I am thrilled and I am so honored to have been elected as the incoming president, or as the now president of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are doing our due diligence to go through and clean up anything, and that's why I, myself and my executive board has been speaking with both the mayor and the city manager, and we would love to have the audit.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Neb, do you want to add anything else to?
No, sir. No, I have nothing else to add. I, I think that it was, it was well-spoken with everybody from that point, so stand for any questions.
All right. I don't have anyone on my list. Now I do. Counselor Best, and then Counselor Robach, and then Counselor Kenner, and Counselor Peterson. So I have Best, Robach, Kenner, Peterson. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
Ms. Call, this group has asked me to have you put this in the minutes, so if you will include this group statement that has been given to me. As a group of concerned citizens, we are encouraging the Roswell City Council to vote yes to move the financial audit forward. This will provide much-needed transparency for the Roswell Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your time and consideration. Tara Laura, Dolores Garcia, Laura Weathers, Melissa Versiglio, Sarah Brady, Christina Ikeres, John Dalton, Dory Farbus McCarty, Daniel Pruitt, Pat McCarty, Rhonda B. Johnson, and Todd Versiglio. Versiglio, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mayor. I had just a quick question and a comment. Just for clarification, the, the- the, the Board of the Chamber is elected by its members?
In the few years that I have sat on the Board and then came up through the Executive Board, it was, a committee was put together to go and find incoming Board members, and then they were elected at the Board level.
Okay. So, the, so the membership does not vote on, on the Board members?
Since I have been involved, to my knowledge, no.
Okay. I, I hope that as you restructure that you would consider that is important.
Oh, absolutely. We've been speaking with many of our current past Board members as well as members, and that is definitely one of the things we are restructuring.
Great. Great. And then I guess my, my comment is, I appreciate that clarification, because I wasn't sure my comment. I wanted to say thank you to, to Mr. Neb for the work that he's been doing to navigate this, this situation, and I really like the attitude of, let's get this done. We need a strong Chamber of Commerce. Let's move past this. Let's move on, and let's, let's, let's get back to, to work. So, I just want to say thank you for, for the work you've been doing. I yield.
All right. I have Counselor Kennard, and then Counselor Peterson. Counselor Kennard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm also pleased that the chamber is wanting to move forward to get this matter taken care of. And so, as, as many of you know, and for those that don't, I was employed by the Chamber of Commerce from September 2019 to January 2020, at which time I was appointed to City Council and asked to step down from my position at the chamber by the former Executive Director. For the sake of transparency, I just need to let you know that I continue to volunteer for the Chamber of Commerce in the Leadership Roswell program. I have volunteered since 2015, and for, I was approached about recusing myself from this vote, and I don't agree. I believe the contrary. I have an even greater responsibility to participate in this vote. During my time at the chamber, I saw things that were concerning. I believe that those who were, who are generally, sorry, genuinely concerned about the chamber, recovering and repairing its relationship in the community would be in favor of this audit. Furthermore, because of my support of the chamber for several years, because I solicited individuals and businesses alike to invest their hard-earned money into the chamber, I, I believe the audit is necessary. In January of 2019, I was a team captain in a membership drive campaign where I gathered other volunteers to solicit businesses to join the chamber. That is my name on the line. Furthermore, I believe that anyone who has invested their time, money, and/or resources into the Roswell Chamber of Commerce deserves transparency, and this includes the city taxpayers. I yield.
Thank you. I have Counselor Peterson. That exhausts my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
I, I think the, the $32,000 is pretty high for, pretty expensive for an audit. I don't, I don't think it's needed. The, there's a lot of internal, internal stuff going on that the city shouldn't be involved in, and I'm not going to support this.
Sorry. I have Counselor Oropesa, and then Counselor Perry. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I, I personally feel this is an internal issue, and, and especially since, since they voided their, their contract. And so, I, I think $32,000 is a lot of money that we could be using on, on something else. And so, you know, I, I know there's a lot of issues that they came to discuss with us because of privacy issues, but I, I think it's something that the chamber should work out on their own. And if they need a, a, an audit, then they, they should do it on their own. And, you know, since we don't have any, any more ties to, to them at this point in time, I, I would say that they, they should do their own audit if they so wish. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Perry and Counselor Stubbs. I have Counselor Kennard wishing to speak a second time. Before I go to her, I will ask if there's anyone else who has not yet spoken wishes to speak. So, I will start with Counselor Perry and Counselor Stubbs. Counselor Perry.
I would just like to say, please, everyone remember, part of the motion that I gave was not just to approve an audit, but also to explore reestablishing a relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce is, is very important to the city of Roswell, and I think that a, a relationship or a bridge built to help with them and to be able to come together and, and make the chamber what it needs to be, that is my, my goal in this, is, is to do that. So, I think that a, an audit will help the current Board to be able to know where things stand and to be able to help them to, to come along and make the changes necessary, and, and hopefully we can reestablish that relationship that I believe is vital for the city of Roswell. I would just like to remind Counsel, with all due respect, Thursday, April the 11th of 2019, there was a regular City Council meeting where at that time, the Council considered approving the Roswell Chamber of Commerce Business Retention and Development Service Agreement. And part of that agreement was that there would be an audit to take place, and those who voted in favor for that were Counselors Best, Counselors Henderson, Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Moore, Counselor Foster, Counselor Stubbs, Counselor Grant, Counselor Peterson, Counselor Robach, and Counselor Oropesa. So, I would just like to encourage my fellow colleagues that this is not a, for me, is not a, a, a vote of, of "told you so" type stuff. I want to help this chamber to, to get to where we can, we can have that shining, help to our businesses and to bring those retentions in that are, that are vital to our community. So, I believe this will be helpful. And the other thing I want to say is I did have a couple of phone calls asking me, what does the city hope to gain from this, and two things. Number one, a reestablishment to help the chamber, and number two, transparency. This is taxpayers' dollars, and anytime, in my opinion, that, that an elected official does not want to bring forth transparency. So, when I thought about this, I thought, well, is it really necessary? Is it not? As I look at it, transparency is vital for a republic such as what we have to work. So, I just want to encourage our counselors to consider that, and my reasoning for voting in favor is to, to get this done, see where things are, and, and let, and, and see this chamber succeed. Thank you.
All right. I have Counselor Stubbs. I have Counselor Kennard, who is asking to speak a second time, and I also have Counselor Oropesa asking to speak a second time. Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really hate to admit this, but Counselor Perry covered exactly what I intended to, and that is the transparency that comes from the audit and the fact that the audit was required from not only that agreement approved last year, but from one approved previously. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have Counselor Kennard. Before I go to her, is there any Speaker, Counselor who has not yet spoken who wishes to do so? Counselor Kennard, you have the floor.
I apologize. I forgot to, Juliana Halverson contacted me via email and asked that I read this this evening. She stated, "As a citizen of Roswell, I would hope you do not vote to defer the audit of the Roswell Chamber of Commerce. A lot of our tax dollars went to support them, and they need to be accountable. As a member of an organization that also received funding from the city, we are very diligent in our bookkeeping efforts to create reports for the city. Any organization that receives tax dollars should be and should also be accountable. Thank you for your time, Juliana Halverson."
All right. Thank you. I have Counselor Oropesa. Is there anyone, any Counselor who has not yet spoken who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a, a comment on, on the roll call vote that Counselor Perry read out. That, that vote that he referenced, the, the, the contract that was signed by the chamber included the, the, the audit, not by the city, by, by the chamber. And so, I want to make sure that the record reflects the, the intent of that, that vote, that it wasn't the city that was going to put up the money to, to pay for, for the audit. Thank you.
All right. I have no one else on my list wishing to speak. At this time, I will-
Mr. Mayor, before you call for a vote, can I have one more statement?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Mayor, City Council-
No, I changed my mind. You can't.
Do what?
I changed my mind.
Okay.
Just kidding.
No. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I, I do want to express one thing, that Mrs. Moore has been in close contact with me over the last couple of weeks as we've walked through this matter, and I appreciate that, that contact, that conversation that we've had. I have faith in this Board that they are going to try to do the best for the business community of Roswell, and if there's anything I can do to help, I intend to try to help that, as business is very important to the city. So, I'll, I'll just leave that statement at that point in time and just let you know that they have my faith and, and my help if they need it at any point in time. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call for a voice vote. A yes or aye authorizes or strikes at, instructs the City Manager to enter in an agreement to do an audit of the Chamber of Commerce and to explore reestablishing a relationship.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. Counselor Moore would like to speak.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Moore, go ahead.
I, I-
No. I'm not hearing anything.
Can you hear me?
Can you get a-
It's a vital-
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
But, I agree that the chamber is a vital part, but I feel like with this, with the audit, why can't we split it? Why can't, why can't they-
Counselor Moore, we're having some technical problems, and we're not able to understand.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Um, I just said that I, I agree that the chamber is a vital part, and I do, I agree that transparency is important, but I think even with the bill, why can't we, can't split the bill? Why can't, they can't pay half and we pay half, instead of us splitting the whole bill for something that, we talked about them paying for an initial, so maybe we can think about splitting it, and then everybody, you know, they're not paying for the whole thing, and we're not, feel like, they're not, we don't, you know, the city doesn't feel like they're putting the bill for something that they should, was supposed to do already. We're, we're supposed to have already provided. I, I, I thank Ms. Moore for, for transparency and coming forward. I really do appreciate that, and that made a few more things clear for me. But I just think, I, I agree they need an audit, but I just don't agree that we should have to split it.
Okay. Mr. Neb, the way this instruction reads, there is no specific dollar amount in the statement that, or instruction that Counselor Perry gave, and you could select a different auditing firm and/or enter in a different agreement with the chamber. Is that, you understand?
That is, that is, Mr. Mayor, City Council, that is correct. In the new terminology, and, and at the request of what the chamber wanted, we, we will work directly with the chamber board in order to move this forward. This just, this just, this statement or this request or this, this vote is to allow me to work with the chamber board in order to accomplish an audit and to reengage in a relationship.
Okay. I now have Counselor Best. Counselor Best has spoken before. Before she does, is there anyone who has not spoken who wishes to do so? Hearing none. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
I, I want to make a statement after the vote. So, after the vote, I'll make a statement.
Okay. In that case, we will do a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the instruction. Counselor Perry, will you read it again? I don't have a copy in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, the motion is for the City Council to instruct the City Manager to arrange for an audit of the City, Roswell Chamber of Commerce and to explore reestablishing a relationship between the city of Roswell and the Roswell Chamber of Commerce.
All right. A yes or aye approves that instruction, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right. I don't have a vote for Counselor Moore yet.
Counselor, that was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I made a mistake, and I pressed the wrong button.
Okay.
Minus no.
Okay. Understand. Counselor Oropesa is correcting his vote as a no vote. Can you try, can you go ahead and push the button again? Is it, is it working? Whoa. We'll change that. Okay. So, we'll make it eight to two with Counselor Peterson and Oropesa in opposition. All right. Sorry about that. Counselor Best, wish to make a statement.
Okay. My statement. There should be no organization that is not transparent. All organizations that receive money should be held accountable to Roswell, Chavas County, the members, business community, and most of all, the taxpayer. If you are or were a Board member on any Board, when you accept your term, you should do your due diligence. Research the Board and the organization. What you are about to step into is a true commitment. If there is smoke, there is fire. Do not hide from the smoke. When you commit yourself to the job, you are responsible for keeping the organization on the right path. Honesty to your members. For over three years, there has been smoke. I would like to see the previous Executive Director investigated. On an average, 89% turn around on all employment in less than two years. Some were bullied from their positions, as were some Board members. There is no place for bullying. Consistently going around the Board members in every decision. This does not follow the rules of a Board. The Executive Director works at the pleasure of the Board. Consistent loss of receipts and many other underlying issues. Gross mismanagement on every aspect of the job. This has shaken this organization to its foundations. This is a perfectly, this is a perfect opportunity to clear away all the misgivings. The opportunity to clear away all the rubble. Rebuild from the ground up. Have more transparency than ever before. When you are in an organization that has a mission statement, work for the members and the taxpayers. Make sure the money is used for the purpose that it was given. Shame on you to the previous Executive Director of the chamber for abusing the employees, the members, and the taxpaying citizens of Roswell and Chavas County. Let's put this aside, start fresh and new. Let's take this audit as a lesson to all who utilize the Roswell, Chavas County, and taxpayers' money for their organization. A few examples. The South, the Southern, Southeastern New Mexico Development District, we call the COG, Main Street Roswell, Hispano Chamber, and Economic Development. My comments are mine, but do not take them lightly. I do do my due diligence before I speak. Thank you.
Next up, item number 20. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to the urgency of this matter, it did not go through a committee, so I moved to approve the awarding of the build-back repairs on the Roswell Public Library due to water damage to Holloway Construction in the amount of $279,538.42, including grocery receipts tax, to be shared between the New Mexico Self-En- tax, to be shared between the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund and the city of Roswell.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs, please activate the motion button, and a second by Counselor Foster to approve the awarding of a contract to Holloway Construction for the Roswell Library. Mr. Chaparo, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I'll try to make it brief. Thank you for your time, I know it's kind of late. As you know, our public library suffered a catastrophic failure. One of our, we found a water pipe that burst overnight, ended up leaking about 10,000 gallons of water into our library. So, what facility was able to come in and we did perform a lot of the demo in-house, so we did a significant cost savings for the city and for the library. Although it is a catastrophic failure, I would look at it as an opportunity as well. So, now that we have it opened up, we're able to find a lot of structural defects throughout the building, we can do some adjustments to it as well. So, we went out to three bids. One individual we drew out of the last two bids, Holloway Construction came in at $279, although that is higher than what the insurance is going to provide us, it is a depreciated value. The estimates between, negotiated between the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund and McLarens, and what I'm asking today is to award the contract to Holloway Construction in the amount of $279,539. The city will have to contribute an amount of $127,000 to fund the project. I do need to let you know, we did not include the deductible, which is $2,500 per incident, so that will be an additional amount that has to go on top. At this time, I would like you to consider the award to Holloway Construction, and I stand for any questions.
All right. Counselors, questions? Mr., I have Counselor Peterson and Counselor Robach. Counselor Peterson, you have the floor.
Does the city water meters, do they have like an alarm?
Negative, sir.
Where the water?
Yeah, I think-
If the water's running, you know, they can turn it off?
No, I don't, we don't have that capability at the time. I think the leak might have started slow at the beginning, then it slowly progressed and moved quicker and quicker. I know what you're talking about, like an emergency shut-off, where the water releases immediately and shuts off.
There's a lot of alarm companies now that will, they'll install a, they'll put it on your water line, you know, in the future, you know, might look into it.
Yeah, we'll be definitely, we'll look into the research of it, and if we do have you available, I'd be glad to look into that for you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counselor Robach.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little clarification on this, so we're still negotiating with the insurance company about what their actual payout's going to be. What is the, what is the high and low? You give us a number here, is that a high number, is that a low number?
No, this is the final number.
Oh, that is the final number.
Because of the depreciation, we tried to negotiate on the prevailing wage. My facility manager, Trent Moore, was able to negotiate a little bit more, but we ended up with this final number and we squeezed as much as we could.
All right, so that is the, that's the final insurance bet. Okay, because it said still negotiating, but that is finished.
Yeah, we wrapped that up.
Thank you, I yield.
Okay. I have Counselor Perry. Counselor, you have the floor.
Just a quick question, is the smart meter reader connected to this, to the library as well, with the water system?
I believe it is, sir.
I just, I would like to see possibly representative from the city to speak with them. I know back when that was going through, one of the big things is that it was going to be able to notify us so that we could have, thank you, Madam Clerk, that was going to be able to help to notify us to be able to have those shut-offs and things to be done remotely. I think we need to keep track of these kind of situations like this and have some very serious conversations with this company as well. I yield.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the awarding of the contract to Holloway Construction in the amount of $279,538.42 for repairs to the Roswell Public Library. A no or nay rejects the awarding of the contract. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Counselor Moore, we can't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the vote is 10 to 0. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Before we go into the next in the closed session, because I know that most people are going to want to go home, and anyone watching is probably not going to sit and watch an empty room, I just wanted to say two things. Number one, a welcome to Parker Patterson as our permanent city attorney. Congratulations, and look forward to working with you as now in that permanent position. And also wanted to, a lot of times, we don't get the opportunity to thank staff when they do things. It's easy, I know that engineering and water department, different things, they get those phone calls when something's going wrong, but they don't always get the kudos when things go right. I had a constituent that lives on the corner of Atkinson and Borindo that called me, actually lives in the county, but there is an easement across his property where there's a large storm drain that goes across and empties into the Borindo River. He called and had some problems with, some pretty significant problems that were over there with it. I got on the phone with city engineer Louis Nahar and asked if he could meet me over there one day. He said, "Let's go right now." I called the property owner back, we were there probably within 15 minutes of the initial phone call being made. He brought with him Superintendent Quinn Miller and Assistant Superintendent Frank, is it Rincon? Okay, I want to make sure I was pronouncing it correctly. And believe it or not, I crawled over a barbed wire fence with Louis's help, but we got back to where it was. They looked, and there was some significant problems back there. I thought that engineering and street department would get to it in a couple of months. They got on it pretty much same day. I don't know how long that they worked, but they did a phenomenal job, and that's the kind of things that's happening in our city a lot of times that our community doesn't hear, and I just want to tell all them that I really appreciate the work they did.
Very good. Thank you. We are now at the public participation on non-agenda items. We had no one sign up to speak on the non-agenda items, so we will now continue on to item number 21. Counselor Stubbs.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that council go into closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Chapter 10, 15, 1H8 and 1H7, to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights relating to the potential lease of land at the Roswell Air Center, and for the discussion of attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant relating to potential claims against the governor of the state of New Mexico for damages resulting from restrictions imposed by the governor's public health orders.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Perry to go into closed session. Any discussion or debate on this motion? This requires a roll call vote, a yes or aye takes us into closed session, a no or nay keeps us in open session. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Or- Oh, that's it, sorry.
And the vote is eight to two. Mr. Peterson, does this require unanimous, or is this acceptable?
No, it's not required, yes.
Okay. We are going into, it is now 9:10. We will reconvene in the other room at, it's 9:11, we'll reconvene at 9:15.
All right, Ms. Call?
Yes.
I'll see you later.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.